Planning Board is now in session. Good evening. First item on the agenda, 10 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval. It's a continued public hearing from February 11th, 2019, February 25th, 2019, and the continued public hearing for 10 Turnpike Road lower impact development, continued from the same public hearings. I'll ask the town planner to give us an update on where we stand tonight. Karina.
All right. The last planning board public hearings for this project, 10 Turnpike, which is a storage facility, was on February 25th. On March 4th, we received a revised submission from DeVellis Ryan Engineers with plans dated February 28th, 2019. Those files were also submitted to Fussin O'Neil, the town's reviewing consultant, and also distributed to the down departments and the planning board for review. Due to the fact that the review has not been completed by Fussin O'Neil, the applicant and his attorney and engineer have asked the planning board, requested an extension to the approval period and also continuation of the public hearings to the April 8th, 2019 planning board meeting.
Thank you. So based on that, there should be no discussion? Now, the reason that Fussin O'Neil has not submitted their report is because the materials submitted by the applicant were at the last minute. Is that correct?
They were very close to... Yes, for the planning board and public review, they were here Monday afternoon, but Fussin O'Neil receives emails. They have to confirm that they get the information and then the next day let me know. So the time is a little tight for them to turn that around.
Sure. No, we periodically get questions or concerns about how long site plans take, and this is one of the classic reasons why they take longer. We're here, but the materials were submitted in insufficient time for us to take any action. And we appreciate the applicant submitting the request for an extension. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the decision...
Approval period.
For the approval period for the major site plan approval and the special lower impact development permit for the All-American self-storage at 10 Turnpike Road to be extended to April 12th, 2019, as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Four to zero. Approval period has been extended. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we extend the... The... Continue the public hearing for major site plan approval and special lower permit for 10 Turnpike Road for All-American Storage. Continue the public hearing to April 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM and 7:05 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Next item on the agenda is discussion item Chestnut Meadow subdivision, release of lots. The town planner can give us an update on this. We had this on our similar item at our last planning board meeting. Karina.
Again, at the last planning board meeting on February 25th, Mr. Michael Feldman with Habitat Communities CFO had requested and got voted an approval for release of lots for Chestnut Meadow subdivision. It was lot 1 and then 7 through 12. A few of the lots, two of the lots, lots 5 and 6 are designated open space lots. And at the time, or during that meeting and prior to that, there was some question as to whether the proponent would come forward and possibly ask for modification to swap out those two open space lots for others. Therefore, at the last meeting, lots 2, 3, and 4 were not released. In the interim, we received a request from Mr. Feldman from Habitat Communities to release lot number 4. So I prepared a release of lot from covenant document for lot 4. And the language is the same as the prior form that was releasing lots 1 and 7 through 12. And in your packet, you have a plan of land that was recorded for the subdivision.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
No, no. So lot 4, you know, lot 4 is not going to be part of any kind of relocation if we do the relocation, so we'd like to release that now as well.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release lot 4 from Chestnut Meadow subdivision as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. All set?
Great, thank you. So I've got, I brought Sheila Sturtevant from my office as a notary, if that's okay.
Yes, Mr. Feldman, I had suggested that he bring a notary with him so that we could get this signed tonight, so you wouldn't have to make an extra trip in this evening. I mean, during the week. So if you have your licenses, then...
Do you need our licenses?
I have been here before.
Okay.
Signed, so I'm good with, I know who you are.
One second. We'll just, we'll just do it. So if you want to come up and witness the signatures, we'll sign them right now.
All right, thank you.
It's easy because we just went through this last week and... I think my license is out in the car.
I've actually done this before with you guys, so...
Any of mine?
Are you with age?
Barely. Just made it.
I love that. Until they say, "Oh, we can't everyone under our..."
Mr. Feldman, could you give us an update on the construction?
We're in for building permit on the first two lots, so...
No foundations in yet?
No foundations yet.
Okay.
Right, so it's in the building department right now. The plans are being reviewed.
Oh, good. Which lots?
11 and 12, I believe. Sheila, is that right? 11 and 12? The building permits?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the binder was in on your road, on Dairy Farm Road.
And also on the other, on the Chestnut Hill Road as well.
Yeah, I was on, I was on, I guess it's Northboro Road. You know, looking down into the... And my wife said, gee, I thought they were going to widen the road. And I thought it was only going to be like about a foot wider. It doesn't look much wider. Is that...
Yeah, it was about a foot wider.
Yeah.
So we did widen that.
Pretty surgical, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get the water line down there.
Yes.
Yeah, good job, because that's, you know, those roads are heavily traveled, but they're also country roads.
Right, it's beautiful. It's just beautiful there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
The less trees you cut down, the more money you'll get for the lots.
Yeah. Absolutely.
No, the traffic's still blocked, right?
Yeah.
It's not for through traffic.
Right.
It won't be for quite a while.
Right, it's really just construction traffic.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Feldman? Go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Do I just list all the names out here?
Yes. Just put each name right there, and then you leave it with us, and I'll file it with the town. You have to leave that document.
I think I have to get it recorded.
Jim's downstairs.
Yeah, he's here.
Yes. I'll quickly run downstairs with you. I think it has to get filed.
You can, you can send it with the other...
Mr. Mills?
Motion for a two-minute recess.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? We'll see you in two minutes. Planning Board's back in session after two-minute recess. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 325 Turnpike Road, known as Ken's Foods, application for sign. I'll ask the town planner to go through this for us.
All right. Three weeks ago, Attorney Pizzoni came into my office with an application for sign. The Ken's Foods at 325 Turnpike Road is looking to put a wall sign up. And it is larger than, is what allowed, is what is allowed in the district, which I believe is industrial park.
Yeah, but it's Route 9, so it's 75 square feet.
Right, so it's bigger than 75 square feet. So he, the building inspector, gave him a denial letter indicating that he had to get a variance and apply through the zoning board of appeals to get approval for that variance. Part of that requirement is that you have to get a recommendation report from the planning board to take to the zoning board of appeals. So in your packet, there is a form that outlines the five criteria that the planning board usually gives their opinion on. And then the memo gets completed tomorrow and forwarded to the building inspector for the zoning board of appeals filing. So I believe Gemini Signs had initially submitted an application for a building permit, which also triggered us to get to this point here. So on the screen, you'll see the graphics that were submitted as part of the zoning board of appeals application.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, Bill Pizzoni, I represent Ken's Foods. And in this case, Gemini Signs, Mark Evangelist, who's here today, who submitted the original request. Two things. From the time of the submittal, we've updated the plan because, as you know, the engineers are out there formulating all the changes that have occurred out at the site to come back with an amended plan to the board. They finally finished this plan, and they were supposed to get it to me before I submitted it, but they got it to me the Monday after. So that's being added to the plan to show you what's out there and where the approximate sign is going to go. You'll also notice that we increased, we didn't increase the size of the sign. We didn't increase the size of the sign, but the proposed square footage has been modified. Because when they did the original calculations, and we're not sure which way we're supposed to do them, they didn't square it off, taking the lower part of the S. But when you square it off, going to the lower part of the S, which is dropped down from the rest of it, it adds the extra square footage. So we're not changing what we're proposing. It's just the calculation, and we wanted to make sure that we were upfront with it. And somebody said, well, wait a minute, if you square it off this way, you're at 157. But we thought the original calculation was accurate. But when Gemini re-looked at it, they said, let's submit it this way and update the plan, what's before the planning board and what's before the zoning board of appeals. So that's what they'll be getting. Just a little quick history on the site. As you all know, we've been in here quite a bit over the last 10 years, modifying the site that NYX originally had built out there. And just the historical side of it, just so you understand. See, when Gemini went in, they told them he needed a special permit. And we had changed over our building inspector at that point. When I looked at all the data, I determined we needed a variance. And I submitted it that way and told the building inspector that. And I think they still published it as a special permit, but they noted the right section. So I think we're okay there. But when the original building was built, it was pushed back this far from Route 9. And I'm sure Mr. Jenks will remember this. That's all peat and moss out in front of it. You couldn't support the structure of a building. And that's why it was pushed so far back. So in order to have a wall sign, and have a wall sign that's visible, it has to be bigger than what is allowed in the 75 square feet. I think when you look at the different photos, it doesn't look like a big difference. But when you're out on Route 9 and you're driving by, you want them to be able to see the sign. You don't want them squinting or looking quickly, what's that say? You know, and there's been issues here with tractor-trailers, missing it and not coming back. You know, looping back improperly, going through town. This was an issue through the years. So we want to make sure that the sign is of an appropriate size. We feel that it fits and is in keeping with the size of the building, the distance from the road, and what Ken's has done at the property. It's not real huge, which some companies would have tried to done. I think Ken's has done it tastefully. And I don't think the difference is that great. And we would hope that you would be able to support the application. There is some data behind this sign here. And this is where I'll let Gemini and Mr. Evangelist speak to it because he brought a section of the sign, just so you can understand what exactly... And he has a piece of the sign, what the sign will look at like. I'll let him talk to the technical aspect of it because I don't pretend to be a sign expert. So, Mark, if you would.
Actually, my name's Matthew. My twin brother's Mark. Anyways, I brought this letter. It's basically the type of letter that we were putting up there. You guys probably recognize this through a lot of the malls and a lot of the... And what we do is, if you open this up, they're LEDs now. Nothing's neon anymore. We don't do much neon. The neon, you know, takes up a lot more energy and this and that. So these are all LEDs, high efficiency LEDs. This is just a sample letter. This is a plastic letter, but we're going to be doing an aluminum letter, so it doesn't rust. Everything's stainless steel, so it doesn't, you don't have any rust going on. And the cover is acrylic. And in this particular case, we're going to do a blue letter that looks blue during the day, but at night, it lights up white. So they wanted it to light up white because it can see it better from a distance. The blue tends to blur from a distance. So during the day, we thought the blue would be best. So it's called the perforation material. It's fairly new. And we thought that would be a good idea to use the perf. We can see it from a distance when it lights up. There's not much, I brought this just to show you the type of letter. I know you can't see too far away, but I just put some specs in here so you can see it. Aluminum returns. The back is all aluminum. Hopefully you can hear me. The face is acrylic. That goes into the side view here. I don't know if you can hear me here, sorry. And so that's just some details about it. But it's a pretty basic channel letter, we call it. But again, everything's LEDs, not neon, as we used to do neon. I think that's really the details of the letter. If anyone has any questions, I can answer them. But the main was, the main one was this one. If you guys may see it a little closer. How far it is from the road and what really, it's not much of a difference in the size. Originally, they wanted it to fill that little, fill that little spot. I don't know if you can see it, from the stripe to the stripe, originally. And after we saw what the bylaw was, which was 75 square feet, we're like, well, we kind of went in the middle of that. If you can see, that we didn't fill that whole spot. Though, from a distance, it probably would be better, but we kind of compromised. And hopefully, this would be acceptable and allowed by, and have some concession in that sense. But is there any questions as far as the material or anything like that that I can answer technically? As far as, they've contracted Gemini Signs to make the sign. So of course, that's why I'm here. I'm trying to, you know, help the procedure and get you okay. So I think we got to go to the next step, I think. Hopefully, we can get, and I don't talk too much here. Thank you.
That concludes the presentation.
Yes.
I'll open it up to the board for questions. Mr. Mills?
Thank you. Can, no, you got to keep that. Can you explain more about, it's going to be white at night, like, and the hours of illumination, then?
I'm not sure about how many hours, but typically, I'd have to talk to Ken's and see what the time clock would do. But there will be a time clock on there, and it will go on and off. I'm not sure what the hours are going to be. If they're going to leave the lights on to mid, you know, until it gets, I don't know. I can't answer that. But I know there will be a time clock. So typically, like with my business, my lights go on, you know, daylight savings time is not, well, whatever. We pushed it up, so we push it up until about 10:00, and that goes off. But I don't know if they'll be leaving their lights on for the trucks to come in to see that if they go, I mean, that might be more of a question that... Is that the question, like, how many hours will it be on?
It's a, it's a 24-hour, you know, around-the-clock operation. So you do have to have the lighting and the signage available. The transition from blue to white is only going to happen once it's dark. It's not going to be white during any daylight hours, because you won't see it.
And you don't have any examples of what it'll look like at night?
No, because I don't, I would have to go there at night and then take a picture in the dark and put the white. I guess I could have done that. I don't. No, I don't, I didn't make one. I didn't make a schematic showing that the white looks like at night. So I guess you would imagine the building being darker with a white letter.
The building's not all lit up, right? It just has those wall fixtures...
There's only emergency lighting out there.
Yeah, down below, so it's...
So you'll see the white letters only at night?
Yeah.
Which, again, that would be a... Which, again, that would be a better visibility from the road. Then again, blue, as, blue sometimes tends to vibrate if you look at it from a distance, if you've ever looked at a blue sign. But those letters kind of, they make it, they vibrate, meaning they get blurry from a distance. So during the day, the blue would be nice because it's going to be on a white background. But at night, the white letters would stand out best for, in this application.
So I'm just concerned with the people living across the street on the, in the, what's Madison?
Madison.
Madison Place. They're going to be looking right down on that. And it's going to be lit up all night, bright, as white, right?
I'm not sure they'll see it from up there because to the left of the building, it's all treeed between that building and the next building. And it's, they're all, the trees are all at the height of that building there. So I haven't run that analysis, to be honest with you. Because I figured they were far enough away, they weren't going to see it because it's coming straight across.
I mean, looking at how far it is from the road, it's very, very small.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if it's going to be so, I mean, it can't be much brighter than some lights that you have in your parking lot. I mean, I mean, they're not, from a distance, this is 450 feet from the road, plus, I'm not sure where the apartments are, but if they're across the street, you're probably going to add how many more feet?
They're across the street and up on the hill, down west. So they're not even directly across the street from this.
And I'm just confirming, there's no other lighting that's going to be, there's no lights that are going to point up to it or anything like that.
No, there's the normal lighting coming in of the driveway.
Right.
And around that side of the building where there's activity. But around the rest of the building, it's just emergency lighting as necessary. As you know, there's a, an emergency driveway right in front there. I don't even think that light's on all night long. I think it just goes on if there's an emergency. I haven't seen it, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Jenks.
I think you said that those are signs you normally do in plastic. But then you said, but we're going to do this one in aluminum, so it won't rust. Does that kind of imply plastic rusts?
I just, I didn't really have a sample to bring with me.
You need a microphone.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. This just happens to be a sample. This is a mold that we used to mold, but we don't mold these letters anymore. I can't even get these from the manufacturer. So I used to make, I made a mistake and probably just brought a plastic one to get you confused. I'm sorry. But this is actually going to be made out of aluminum. It's O4O baked enamel aluminum. And the bends are the same, everything's identical. So we will not be doing the edging as I did and showed you the plan on there. The plan is actually going to be all aluminum, aluminum back, everything aluminum. And the face, the face is actually plastic, which is acrylic. It's an acrylic material. And what we do is we apply, in this case, we're going to apply, it's called a perforated material, that will actually look blue during the day. And again, at night, it will turn, and they're little teeny dots. So that's, it's kind of a cool look. And it's fairly new. So yes, it will be aluminum, not plastic. So I didn't mean to confuse you with that. I didn't mean to confuse you with bringing you the plastic sample.
Is the blue strip across the front of the building, is that there now?
Yes. It's already painted.
Is that part of the sign?
I think it's decorative for the building.
It was a decorative piece to cut down on the massing of the building, so it wouldn't look like just a big white.
I like it. I'm just wondering if technically either the zoning enforcement officer or the zoning board is going to question whether that's part of the sign.
Yeah, when up the zoning enforcement officer, didn't have a problem with it because he thought it was part of the construction and the massing of the building.
I like it.
Phil, I could add also that I did meet with the building inspector on a couple of items at once last week. And I believe we, I brought that up with her as well. And if I recall correctly, they weren't concerned with the stripe along the top, as opposed to, they were focused on the words, the letters and the words of that's part of the sign.
Good.
Mrs. Latrell.
So your hardship is that it's, the building's so far back from the street that it can't be seen?
Yeah, the hardship has to be driven by the site, you know, the constraints on the site and the fact that the building had to be pushed back so far. A small sign is not really practical back there. And that should be enough to get us over that hurdle.
But there is a standing sign that's right on Route 9 that's visible from Route 9?
There is. But it's short height, small for when you're just coming in and turning in.
Well, I mean, you can see it far. When you're coming down, like, when you're headed west, you don't see the sign on the building. You see the standing sign first. So the hardship is that two signs can't be seen?
Well, you're entitled to have two signs. You're entitled to have a wall sign and a sign out front like that. And in order to have the wall sign and have it be visible, we've raised the issue of the variance and for the hardship.
So according to our bylaw, no sign may be illuminated between 10 p.m. and 6 a.m. How do you get past that?
I didn't know it was going to be illuminated until tonight.
I'm just a sign guy.
So what are the hours on at 6:00 to?
10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. No illumination.
That's on Route 9, too?
Yep.
I'll have to look. Because I honestly, I thought, I know, I see a lot of signs on Route 9 that are on all night long, on most of the buildings. So I'll check the bylaw and I'll deal with that at the zoning board.
My other question, I don't, I think it's an attractive sign. I don't have a problem with that. The other piece that I don't know how to get by is that according to the bylaw, in no case shall approval be granted for a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet. So I would think asking for a variance for 157.9 would nullify the intent of the bylaw.
Well, I disagree. And I guess I'll deal with that with the zoning board.
Well, I think it's pretty clear, in no case.
That's why we have variances. It also says you're not supposed to be closer to certain lot lines than we grant variances for. That's the whole idea of a variance.
Well, it appears that the intent to the bylaw is that signs aren't larger than 100 square feet on Route 9.
That's your interpretation. My idea is you can ask for variance for anything from the bylaw because we allow variances in the town of Southborough.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Thank you. So I'm glad Mr. Jenks brought up the color, the band, the blue, the blue band. And I think I agree with the building inspector because if you go by that building and you see the blue band around it, you say it's there to reduce the massing of the building.
Right.
I think it would be considered a sign, part of the sign, if when you saw the blue band, band, you said, oh, that's Ken's. But I don't think anybody would do that. I mean, Ken's is...
If we had the bottle up there, they might.
Right, but...
Because the bottle's unique.
It's the, I mean, we just had U-Haul and it was the opposite, where their colors, I think, are orange and brown. And the way they had them configured on the building, you know, even if you didn't see U-Haul, you would say, that color combination would make you think of that particular product or that company. But in this case, the blue band could be on any building for any other product, and I don't think it would trigger that, the name of that product without the name.
And if you may, you may recall, but when we were looking for the variances to the expansion of the site, we did discuss the fact that we were going to be doing massing techniques so the building would not look so out of place or so large from the roadway up from the abutters.
I don't remember a sign that's come before this board. Maybe the building inspector's seen them, but I don't recall a sign that changes colors. And it doesn't, the bylaw doesn't seem to address that. It talks about moving signs. Any and every sign, any part of which moves, is designed to move or to be moved by any means. That's the definition of a moving sign.
That would be like an electronic reader board.
Yeah.
Flashing open sign or something to that nature. Yeah, I mean, this material's fairly new and the bylaw probably is fairly old or hasn't been updated.
When does it transition?
Yeah, how does it know to change colors?
It's just the light goes on.
When the light hits it.
No, the light, no, the light goes on.
Goes through it?
No, the light goes on. You just, you turn the LEDs on and the letters have little teeny dots that perforated. And so the face is blue, we spray the material blue and it has little dots. So at night, the white dots light shine through. So it lights up white at night and during the day, it's opaque white, I mean, opaque blue.
Are the lights off or they just not?
The lights would be off during the day and then they would certainly go on at night on the time clock.
On the time clock.
Whatever the time would be, I mean, if the bylaw says this time to this time, then I'm sure that we'll have to do that. I mean, or they'll have to discuss that or make that decision.
Mr. Jenks.
I think you could argue that the sign is not changing colors. They don't have blue lights and white lights in there. It's reflection from the surrounding environment that changes and makes the sign appear white or blue. But I don't think the sign itself is changing colors.
No, I don't think it falls underneath that category. I don't...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I agree.
Well, even if it does, I'm not finding it in the code that it's prohibited.
Right.
Then in illumination here, no sign may utilize translucent panels, canvas or other fabric, letters, devices or other similar components to create an image by allowing light to pass through, except for businesses fronting on Route 9.
Right.
So you got by on that one. The light, whether internal or illuminating the sign from the outside, shall not be placed, directed or arranged so as to throw a beam of light, glare or reflection on any street or highway, walk or nearby properties of others in such a manner as to create a traffic hazard or nuisance. So I think that whether the sign is, meets the code or you get the variance, it's still going to be a blue sign in the daytime for Madison to look at and a white sign in the, at night for Madison to look at, whether they can see it. We're not sure if they'll be able to see it because of the tree line, but if they can, it's still going to be a sign there and it's still going to be white at night. It's just, is the difference between what's allowed and what you're proposing cross the line into being?
Creating a traffic hazard.
A traffic hazard or nuisance. So the board, the code requires the board to, as the building inspector's letter stated, it refers specifically to that section of the code where the planning board, in granting or, in order for the zoning board to grant a special permit that doesn't meet the zoning bylaw, that the planning board is required to submit a report to the ZBA. And the report, text of which is a yes or no or not applicable, consists of five items. So I'll ask, so the way we do this is a board member will read the requirement and then the board will vote as to whether it's yes, no, or not applicable. And then based on those five votes and any additional comments that we may provide, that would consist, that would comprise the report to the ZBA. Mr. Mills.
Number one, the sign's scale is reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance and travel speed and sign size of nearby structures.
So it's yes, no, or not applicable? My vote is yes?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Want me to read the next one?
Yep.
The sign's size, shape and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices of the roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure or hide them.
That's either N/A or yes, but it's probably yes based on the second, second part of the requirement.
I'd say yes.
I don't think it defines or enhances architectural elements of the building. The sign really is pretty small compared to the front of that building. I would have a hard time saying it defines any of the architecture. But I think that's positive.
Mrs. Latrell.
I would say no because I still think the sign's size derogates the intent and purpose of the bylaw because it exceeds 100 square feet.
I'd like to change my vote to N/A. All set?
All set.
All right, so we have two NAs, one yes and one no. Number three.
The sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures and provides reasonable continuity in mounting location, height proportions and material.
Well, there's no other signage on the same structure and there's no other adjacent structures, so I guess it's N/A for me.
N/A.
Yes, I'm, yes, no. Let me take that back. It's N/A. I'm agreeing. Yes, it is N/A.
Number four.
Sign materials, color, lettering, style, illumination and form are reasonably compatible with the building design, neighborhood, context and use.
For me, that's a yes?
I would say that's a yes.
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 Number five.
Sign's size, location, design and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
That's a yes for me.
That is a yes for me.
Yes.
No.
Does the board have any other comments? Mrs. Latrell, did you want to have your comments be part of our report?
Sure.
Do you, do you guys have those, have her comments regarding the issue of exceeding the hundred, the size exceeding the 100 feet? If you want to, what's it?
On number two?
Yes?
On number two, that you thought that it went against the ZBA, the bylaw, that it shouldn't exceed 100 feet.
Correct. Per the bylaw 174-11E4, it says, "In no case, however, shall approval be granted for a wall sign that exceeds 100 square feet in area." So I feel that issuing a variance for this sign would nullify and substantially degrade the intent and purpose of the bylaw, which is explicit that a sign shall not exceed 100 square feet.
So is it the board's, I just asked the question, but is it the board's intent to certainly carry forward to the ZBA in our report, the outcome of the five votes? Do we also want to add Mrs. Luttrell's comments? As, as, from one member?
If I could.
Well, hold on.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, but have we done that in the past?
I think we have. I think the ZBA has benefited from, as opposed to just a report with, you know, two yeses, one no, so on. If there's an additional explanation or comments relative to either a yes or the NAs or the nos, I think that helps them understand.
I'd be comfortable.
Go ahead, Bill.
I was just going to say in section two where this criteria is laid out, it does specify that you can't act on any special permit or variance application. So it's obvious that we can apply for variances relative to this. Your position that you think it's not in keeping with the intent of the bylaw, you know, that's something for the ZBA to determine.
Anything else on this?
Could I ask a quick question? Just for procedure. When the report gets finalized for the zoning board of appeals, does the record on this report show the number of yea, yes, no and not applicable? Or is there just the majority is the one that answers?
No, I break it down.
You wouldn't want it broken down?
Yes.
Okay, can do that.
The more, the more detail and the more, you know, the whole idea of this is to help the ZBA understand how we feel about it. And then they can, they can act accordingly. I mean, over the years, they've received feedback that if we're able to give them a little bit more detail, it helps them in their decision process.
Thanks.
Anything else? Good luck.
Thank you.
We'll send that report to the ZBA probably tomorrow, right?
Thank you.
Yes, I'll get it out.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Just trying to sort of.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the master plan update. We'll ask the town planner and Mrs. Luttrell if she'd like to update the board and the public on progress relative to the master plan.
All right, I'll start off and then maybe you can add because you were at the meeting. The master plan committee held its first meeting on Wednesday, March 6th, here in the McCall of Hearing Room at 7:30 PM. I believe there were 17 or 18 attendees. At this meeting, they got organized. They voted on a chair, which is Mimi Luttrell.
Rub it in.
They also voted on a vice chair, who is Karen Sit, Judith Watson. Yes, from Conservation. And then a secretary, Kathy Bottalini. Another, based on that meeting, another meeting has been tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019 at 7:30 PM at the Southborough Senior Center in rooms A and B, at which they'll be discussing more, they'll be reviewing the status of implementation items from the 2008 master plan and then also discussing the MAPC's technical assistance proposal that we have received. So on that note, I'd like to say in addition to the meeting started, getting started, the MAPC has provided us with a draft proposal for the technical assistance they're going to provide the master plan committee. And a copy of that's in your packet. So what I'm hoping is to get some feedback on this proposal from the planning board and then hopefully get this executed and back to MAPC so that they can be ready to potentially attend the next meeting if that's the best step, next step for them. And start getting them on board.
Do we need to vote in anyone?
Do, say it again?
Do we need to vote in anyone?
Oh, yes, that's the next, that's coming. We do, we have one more member, one more seat and we have a person for that, for council on aging. And again, if we need a little time to look this over, that's not a problem. MAPC is, you know, just recently submitted this to me.
So do you, we all have this in front of us. It's two pages?
Correct.
And says here, "Project connection to Metro Future. Plan comprises 65 specific goals for the year 2030, many of which are relevant to this project. They include..." So "Metro Future serves as a guide for the agency's work related to smart growth and regional collaboration." So those 65 specific goals of Metro Future are considered relevant by MAPC. They're considered relevant to this Southborough's, to Southborough's master plan work. Am I reading that right? Am I saying that right?
Well, I think the, the the 65 specific goals for the Metro Future 2030 is the program that initiated, is initiated already. And of those 65 goals, the goals that are listed here, 2, 4, 5, 7, 10, 14, 16, 20, 51, are the ones that they feel would be most applicable to be considered during the update of the master plan, if I'm reading that right. So Metro Future 2030, and just to outline, they're also going into another phase called Metro Common 2050, which are, is a regional plan with a goal of achieving for 2050. So they're just embarking on that now and they're educating people on what that is through workshops and all. So it's my understanding that this Metro Future 2030 was prob, is probably an interim between what happened last and this new Metro, Metro Common 2050. But this is what we're hoping that MAPC will bring to light to the committee so we understand this fully. At the same time, I'm learning about it and making sure we don't miss anything.
Says here that the MAPC staff will meet twice with the master plan committee to format for visioning forum. Is that all we're getting is two, two meetings?
I think that's.
Or is it two meetings for that part of it?
I think it's two meetings for that portion. So attendance at two of those meetings. In the interim, they're going to be coordinating with, through the planning department as well. So I need a little time to, you know, have a chance to talk to MAPC directly and vet any questions that we have. So I was hoping, in addition to some questions that I'm going to have to ask them, that if we had any, if the board members had any questions, I could then approach the principal manager of this division who prepared this and get clarification on those questions. So here initially, it says, "The project is for Phase 1 of a master plan in which MAPC will assist the town in determining a vision for the update to the 2008 master plan process. The project will include public input through a forum and other outreach, such as focus groups, et cetera, to guide the process, essentially beginning the visioning element of the plan as a precursor to the master plan update." So their first step is to come in and assess where the old plan was and then get an idea of where the committee wants to take, or the town wants to take the new plan as the first steps. And that will include coordination with the town through me and in such through Mimi Luttrell as the chair. So we have established the master plan committee and the MAPC staff will meet twice with the MPC to format for visioning forum, but also build local buy-in for the process. The town will organize a community immersion day where the key town personnel, staff and boards will tour Southborough and MAPC staff, with MAPC staff to familiarize MAPC with major issues and opportunities. So it sounds like that's already three. So attend two master plan committee meetings to get an idea of where we want to take it and then do a tour with pertinent people who can provide proper input so that MAPC gets a better feel of what the town wants to do. Helping MAPC get immersed in the project as well as the committee itself. And on different levels because, you know, committee people are much more familiar with the town's current situation, past history and some of the places they want to take the town. So it's kind of an immersion for MAPC, guidance tool for the committee members who are a little more familiar. So my goal is to just get some questions in addition to some that I'm going to have and get those clarified. And then if everybody's on board, get this executed, you know, within the next week or two.
Mimi, did you have anything to add to this, to what Karina just said?
About the MAPC?
About this scope. Is this the first time you've seen it?
No, I read it briefly.
So but the master plan committee has not seen this?
They, I handed it out at the last meeting.
And were they, was that a homework for them to give you feedback?
To look at it and, yeah, to see how we can best utilize the MAPC. I don't think that they'll be needed at our next meeting because our next meeting, we had all the stakeholders look at the implementation items that were assigned to their entity to decide whether they've been accomplished or if it was still a goal or, and that will give us a better idea of where we are.
Because at the end here, the deliverable, in addition to those, the attendance and all this other handouts, flyers, maps, et cetera, that they say that they can provide at meetings and events, says here, "Project timeline." And then the last item is a visioning report, October of 2019. So I would think that the master plan committee would have to understand what a visioning report is and then decide if that's what they want. Do we really need a visioning report? Is that really the best way to do a master plan update? Maybe it is. And maybe the master plan committee will say, "That's what we want." And, or if we go through all of this and then in October, we get a visioning report that's nice, but how much will it contribute to the actual update of the current master plan? And then, this might all be perfectly fine. Looking at the project timeline, and again, this is something that we tried to implement a lot sooner than March of the year. I was hoping that we'd have this stuff done before January so that we wouldn't be having focus groups, interviews, et cetera, in the months of June and July when there's virtually no one around. So the interviews may be difficult to get because people are on vacation and especially in July. June might be okay and the focus groups, but we've, we've seen that not a whole lot gets done in Southborough in July and August. And then, of course, the forum in September is a good idea. So those, I guess, are my comments. If if the master plan committee, you know, after a certain, probably not after the first meeting, but maybe soon, would say, "Well, the master plan is, is way out of whack. It's useless, the one we have now. It doesn't reflect anything that we do in town or that we want to do." So then maybe, you know, you're starting really at the beginning or, and you need this visioning report and you need all this other stuff. But if the, if the master plan committee says, "Well, the current master plan does need updating, but it doesn't look like it's a major, huge project," then maybe that's what should be decided and head in that direction and get right to the meat and potatoes of the update of the report, master plan, rather than getting a visioning report.
I think that was our intention, to weed that out and figure out what direction we're going in.
So we're in that, those early stages. It could, it could, it could be that this scope is okay, but it could also be that we don't want to do this.
Or the, can I? Yeah, I think, I agree that we're in the early stages and trying to do the first pass. Like Mimi said, everyone's got their homework for the area that they represent to look at and say, "Hey, what's still applicable, what isn't? Where do you think, maybe things could be weeded out?" Because there are, there were so many goals that it was identified that it didn't even seem reasonable that all of them could be achieved within the 10-year period that we've already had it. So I think your point is well-taken that whether or not we need a visionary So I think your point is well-taken, that whether or not we need a visionary report later is still TBD. One thing, though, that we did define, I think, across the board, was that we do want to have the focus groups similar to what was, what occurred in the past, so that it isn't just 20-some-odd people saying, "Hey, this is what the Master Plan's going to look like now." We want to open it up to the community, get the community's feedback, so that it's not just, like I said, 20-some-odd people saying, "This is what the new Master Plan's goals are going to be, and that's it." So does that give you a clear idea of what we're trying to do? We're trying to weed out the stuff that we think might not be relevant. The intent is still to do the interviews and get the town involved, but whether or not that visionary report's necessary or not is TBD.
Do we, yeah, I think that's clearer. And then, and I agree that those, that four out of these five listed, project timelines listed here are all necessary steps. And if, and from the last time we did this, we can remember that those four steps are a lot of work, and they do take time by a lot of people. So if the first four steps are like 99% of the scope, and the visioning report is like a couple of hours' worth of work, then, okay. But if half the project is the visioning report, which I don't think it is, but should get an idea of the level of effort for that visioning report, and what the value of it is. And then push this out another month or two to November or December, and try, you know, maybe have the... I just don't, you know, if you want to have, if we want to have focus groups in June, before school gets out, there's still going to be a lot of people around, but after that, just forget it until after Labor Day, as far as expecting a lot of input from the townspeople. So have we helped you at all?
You have. I understand the timeframe better. That works based on when people are around. We need to clearly understand the weight of the visioning report on the scope. It appears to me that the scope is aligning itself with what the Master Plan Committee is moving forward on already. In other words, you're reviewing the old Master Plan in particular groups, and figuring out what happened before, and that aligns itself with the scopes as research and analysis of previously completed plans. So the MAPC, so the Master Plan Committee is educating themselves right now on the current report. MAPC is going to do that as well, but since the Master Plan Committee will already be decently versed in that before they come on board, the Master Plan Committee will also be able to guide MAPC in return, with the specifics for the town, whereas MAPC is going to guide the Master Plan Committee on the big-picture overview, how to get things accomplished, right? What to focus on, what the trends are, and those types of issues. So it'll be a good combination, the specifics coming from Southborough, and the overall guidance of where, what works, and where to take the plan. And then the two will work together to come up with the new list of goals. Some may be carried over, some may be new, based on this Metro Future 2030, and their knowledge of the Metro Common 2050 program. And then we'll ultimately get put to test out in the public with these visioning forums to see if every, if what is being assumed is what is really wanted. And then that will culminate in a report probably, which will say, "Okay, this is where we are. Here are the next steps we have to take." Either it's, "We only have these simple little changes," or "We have these medium amount," or "We need a revamp." That's where I see this. So I think I can convey these concerns to MAPC initially, from the Planning Department, so we can, if there's anything we want to refine that schedule, I'm sure they'll be happy to work with us to see what works best for Southborough timewise, because there's no sense to schedule something if there's not going to be people around and be effective. That would just be spinning our wheels. Does that sound like I understand where you want to go? Okay. And then Mimi and I can coordinate a little bit, and you, based on what the committee's feedback is, on anything they have concerns with as well, on the score. And then Dawn and I can probably do a once-final review, once we have all that information, and then I can sign off on it. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds good.
The Dawn and I part would, should probably be the Mimi and you.
Yes.
And then you, and then if, and then either you sign it, or if necessary, they want me to sign it, I'll sign it. But I would, I would rely on the opinion and the work of you two far more than myself. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, and this is related to the Master Plan, but it may be a Planning Board issue, which is why I'm bringing it to you instead of just the Master Plan. And I've talked, or emailed with Karina and Mimi about this, but to take a line out of the 1967 movie, The Graduate, one word, plastics. In 2019, one word, resiliency. Everywhere I go, to all kinds of different groups, it's being used. Resiliency plans, resiliency is a requirement, how are you addressing resiliency in this grant, for all different types of proposals. And why I'm bringing it to you is because whether or not the Master Plan takes it up, which I believe they will on some level, it's a bigger issue. And I recently came across, and I didn't even, I was like, "What is this resiliency everyone's talking about?" Right? Well, I came across a plan that Magic, which is a subregion of MAPC in the Concord area, they did a regional resiliency plan, and it addresses transportation, job growth, demographics, businesses, and it's more than just, you know, where we might be having flooding in the future, but what does that mean for transportation, what does that mean for jobs, tourists, many things. So we don't, and then I found out, because Karina suggested I bring that to our rep to MAPC, Kathy Bartalini, sorry, Bartalini, who told me, "No, she's not." So I don't know if you're aware, we do not have a rep to MAPC. And then I went to the Regional Metro West Collaborative, it's not Growth Management anymore, and their website, the last thing they had on it was from 2017, so that didn't seem very up to date. But I would think this was something that was done for that region, a report, and it would be really great if we could have one for our region that we could tap into, and not likely to be part of this Master Plan, but something even the Master Plan might recommend, but somebody would have to be sort of pushing that agenda at this time, I think, or talking to another town in our region, seeing how we could make this happen, because it seemed like, and I can send it, or ask Karina to send it to everyone, the regional report. But on top of that, there's the state grant, which is much more limited in addressing, you get state money to create a resiliency plan for your town, but it's much more focused and not as, nowhere near as widely addressing issues as the regional one that Magic did for that area. So I'm bringing it to you, because if the Master Plan doesn't... I think it's something you're going to want to address in your Master Plan on some level, but I think the Planning Board wants to be aware on, in the, for now or the future, getting something like that done. And maybe getting someone to be your rep to MAPC. Isn't it your rep?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
Isn't it the Planning Board who has a rep to MAPC?
I will check the website tomorrow under the committees. I remembered seeing MAPC in the Metro West Regional Collaborative having a rep, so I have to see who's currently appointed there.
Kathy Bartalini.
For Metro West Regional?
For MAPC, but she said, "No, she's not." She did, she refused the appointment, is what her email to me said.
All right, I'll check, I'll check the website tomorrow that has the official appointments.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? The Master Plan is a very exciting program, tell by the attendance tonight for this item. So if we're done with that Master Plan update?
Yes, one last thing. The moderator has informed Mimi that she does have a placeholder during annual town meeting to give a progress report on the Master Plan.
I told him I'd try and keep it under two hours.
Excellent. So next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Appointment of Master Plan Committee Members. We have our spreadsheet in our packet. Karina?
The last member to fill the Master Plan Committee is from the Council of Aging, Joyce Magnawskis.
So moved.
Second.
Most has been made in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Tree City USA Program, Proposed Tree Bylaw. So we've... Planning Board is sponsoring Article 28 in this year's town meeting. Article 28 is to add a new chapter to the Town Code, which would be Chapter 153, Trees. And there's several sections to this, and the the text is a blend of information that we received from the Tree City USA Program, and a town that recently became a tree city. And the intent of adding this Town Code chapter is to meet one of the four criteria to become a tree-city community. So the Town Warrant is on the town website. You can go to Article 28 and read this. It refers to Mass General Law, Chapter 87 and Chapter 40. Chapter 87 is shade trees, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 15C, is titled Scenic Road Designations. And both of those are state laws that the town of Southborough is, uses to govern public trees throughout the town. So before we go through the the presentation, the slides, I'll ask the town planner if you had anything else to add, Karina?
No, I think you covered it. We are, we have a presentation that I'm going to put up on the screen, which defines, summarizes Tree City USA, and why it's a great program for the community to become a part of. It's not a difficult program to be designated a Tree City USA community, and it's good timing-wise, because of the work that's happening on Main Street and other locations where utilities have had to remove trees, and the storms that have happened. So this program kind of will be like a pep rally to get things moving, to get some attention to new trees being planted, to make up for some of those losses that the town sees. So I'm hoping that, you know, this is received well at town meeting, and I think it will be. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback already from Historic. For one, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, decided to support this bylaw, which will help us become a Tree City USA community.
So we have a handful of slides that we'll show tonight. We've shown, we went through this with the Selectmen last week, and as Karina said, it was well-received. So the purpose of this warrant article is to accomplish one of the four criteria for a city or town to become and sustain, to become a Tree City USA community. The Tree City USA Program has been greening up cities and towns across America since 1976. It's a nationwide movement that provides the framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their public trees. Tree City USA is a national recognition program, and is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with U.S. Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters. Green infrastructure is the only part of a city's infrastructure that actually appreciates in value over time. Trees clean the air, absorbing pollutants that trigger asthma attacks and other health problems. Trees absorb carbon dioxide and provide life-giving oxygen. Shade from trees cools the urban landscape. Water vapor given off through transpiration adds to the cooling influence of trees. Stormwater runoff can be reduced by tree canopies by as much as 65%, reducing flooding and the need for expensive facilities. More than 3,400 communities have made the commitment to becoming a Tree City USA. They have achieved Tree City USA status by meeting four core standards of sound urban forestry management. Terry, are you picking up on the screen? Okay. According to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, there are 87 cities and towns in Massachusetts that are tree-city communities, including some in our area. And the slide will show that we have Westboro, Marlboro, Framingham, Grafton, Natick, Weston, and cities and towns further away, far out into the Berkshires, City of Boston, and out into Cape Cod. These are the four standards. Tree Board or Department, Tree Care Ordinance, which is which is the purpose of this Article 28. Community Forest Program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita, and an Arbor Day Observance and Proclamation. So Southborough's had a tree warden for a long time. Additionally, the DPW frequently uses the services of a professional arborist. So Southborough meets standard number one. Southborough currently does not meet standard number two, which is the ordinance, and that's the goal of Article 28. An ordinance is approved by a city council in a city. In a town, the ordinance is called a bylaw, and is approved by town meeting. In a town, the ordinance is called a bylaw and is approved by town meeting. South Pro has a tree policy dated 2010, however, it does not meet the standard of the bylaw, of a bylaw. Article 28 will be our bylaw that will meet standard two. The bylaw simply codifies what we already do relative to public trees. We currently comply with the applicable sections of Mass General Law 87 and Mass General Law 40, Section 15C, scenic trees. Standard number three, the $2 per capita. South Pro meets this standard. Currently, the DPW reports that South Pro spends approximately or over $60,000 a year on our tree program, which is around $6 per capita. So, we meet that standard. And then, standard number four, South Pro does not meet standard number four, which is the proclamation. So, approving Article 28 at the town meeting will encourage our selectmen to issue a proclamation to observe Arbor Day. The proclamation can call for actions that may include involving schoolchildren, scouts, church groups, sponsoring contests for young people and adults, a Tree of the Year contest, presentations by celebrities, honoring individuals who have made important contributions, and of course, planting trees. In the absence of a volunteer, the town planner will draft the proclamation and place that in front of the selectmen for their action, which will only happen after the acceptance or approval of Article 28. And then, the final step to becoming, to become a tree city is to submit an application that would document our compliance with the four standards. And again, in the absence of a volunteer, the town planner will complete the application. So, we hope to get your support at the town meeting for South Pro to become a tree city community. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Latrell?
Just along the vein and the importance of trees, I heard today that Cambridge has a prohibition on cutting down trees. They have suffered the loss of tree canopy, and now they're taking serious protecting their trees that they currently have.
I received an email also over the weekend about the paint, the painting of the trees along Main Street, identifying those trees that will, are to be cut down. It's virtually every tree on, between Middle Road and, School Street. If you've gone by, you'll see the fresh paint on one tree on the Town Common, and then all of the trees along the north side of Main Street that will be cut down for the Main Street project.
There's one on the corner right before you get to Lata Squama.
And one at the corner before Lata Squama. So, it's, it's an important subject. There will be new trees planted on, under the Main Street project, but cutting down mature trees takes a long time to replace them. Anyone else? Mr. Mills?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to acknowledge the excellent job you did at presenting for the selectmen and the advisory at the same time, because I believe it was a joint meeting the other day. I was there present, as was Ms. Latrell, and I, I don't mean to speak for her, but thank you for presenting and getting their support.
Well said, Mr. Mills.
Thank you. Hopefully, we'll have some success. Our success will be the town's success if we become a tree city community. Next item on the agenda, oh, and back to the tree city. Be, be aware around town, we're going to have some, we're planning to have some visual aids to remind the citizens that at town meeting, there will be an article relative to South Pro becoming a tree city. We're in the process of getting those visual aids prepared. Next item on the agenda is the planner's report. Corinna?
All right, quickly. On the planner's report, I received from feedback, I received feedback this afternoon from Attorney Levy for Zero Furman Ave regarding the U-Haul project. And last week, March 7th, Framingham approved their minor site plan. And I forwarded an email to you with the information and a copy of the decision. Reading it quickly before the, tonight's meeting, I believe that the applicant is going to give Framingham $30,000 to provide pedestrian access. And if it's not used within a year, I believe it gets forfeited or something like that. But I did send it to you in your email, so you'll have a chance to review it, not only the decision but feedback. And Attorney Levy said that he would follow up with us immediately soon as that work starts, so that he would let us know that's coming. He indicated that there weren't any changes to the Framingham plans that would impact South Pro. As a matter of fact, it's the same plans with same date and revision that were referenced in their decision as well. So, if you have any further questions on that, you can let me know once you read all the material that I emailed you on that.
Does that mean that the signage and the, or the, 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 the pictures of people having fun?
Lifestyle graphics. I'm not sure, I didn't read the full decision yet. I got it shortly before the meeting today, so I wanted to just let you know, at least there's some information to look at. But I'll check that out, and we'll see what exactly was approved over there. The annual town meeting is Saturday, March 23rd. I have a planning board meeting set up for you at noon in the Room 186 at the Charterer School. It's the faculty dining room, same as two years ago. So, that's ready.
So, just on that piece, the CPC has a meeting, I think, at the same time. So, I don't know if to the quorum if it'll be needed there, or, so if we could get that agenda ahead of time, so I could try to coordinate with the CPCs, so I can be where needed the most.
Okay.
Well, we could repost it at a different time.
I, I mean if,
I haven't posted it yet. I have a draft, and I have the room booked, so we, if you needed a slightly different time, that could be arranged. So, I'll forward the agenda. Room 186.
Oh, you're talking at town meeting? At noon?
We don't know what's coming before the CPC at, at that point, which,
It could be, it could be fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be a hot, hot night.
So, I just want to put it out there, so I, I need to know as we get closer, what is, you know, if you need me or not, so I can,
Well, if we,
if you need, if you need all four, if we can do that as early as possible, and then maybe I could step away to go to the CPC, so I could benefit them, that would be helpful. Does that make sense? I'm trying to.
Yeah, we don't have hardly, the reason, I mean, we, we post a meeting for every, before every town meeting, so that if there's any,
New items.
New items, or if there's any discussions that we need to have in public, then it's properly posted. Or if there's any decisions or actions that we have to take, but right now, there's nothing. So, if we, as we get closer, if we posted the meeting for 11:50.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to bring that up.
We always stay in session through the life of the, of the town meeting in case we, we have to take some actions.
I just wanted to point that out, because I think there is going to be quite a lot to discuss on the CPC side.
Okay, last thing from the planner's report is the town clerk's office has posted a political calendar. It's on the website with important dates for the annual town meeting, annual town election and candidate information. So, if anybody wants to see that, I have it on the planning office bulletin board as well. And that's all I have for planner's report.
That's the letter.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. The last thing is, there was a notice of violation sent out to the owner of 144, 154 Turnpike Road regarding the driveway connection and access to Breakneck Hill Road that was sent out by the building commissioner zoning enforcement officer recently. So, we're waiting to see what comes of that, and I'll keep you updated.
Thank you. And I also, there was an update too about the sign for the fire department. It sounds like that they're, at the, I don't know if you saw it or not, but when, at the last selectmen's meeting prior to the chairman's excellent presentation on Tree City USA, the fire department committee was discussing that they're in final stages of designing a different sign, it sounded like, than what was originally on the, the plan, and that they're going to present it to the selectmen, and then based on that, they'll come back to us. So, for those who weren't there or didn't see it, it sounds like they were taking our advice and trying to make it integral to the other signs in front of town buildings, so, which is good. At least I'm happy with that.
Thank you.
Nothing else on the planner's report, we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes. We have in our packet.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from July 9th, 2018, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2018, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting, meeting minutes from January 7th, 2019, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Just have the changes been made? Okay.
I made a, I made changes, yes.
So, as amended.
As amended.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Four to zero, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from February 20th, 2019, as written.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes from February 25th, 2019, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Four to zero.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we acknowledge that we are now caught up with all our meeting minutes, and we thank our support for what an effort that was performed to get us caught up and to this point.
Second.
Any discussion? The, the town planner has been a one-person department for the last month and a half, and before that, for quite a while. And I just think that South Pro is very fortunate to have such a productive town planner that we have. Mrs. Latrell? No? Oh, I thought, I thought you were,
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate Kate's work, has really driven us forward the past two months with your help. I'm happy to do it.
Thank you, Kate. Our next meeting is March 23rd, a time that will be posted. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion here and all in favor? To adjourn.